The Chair will call the October 21st, 2025 Meeting of the City Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Redpath, can you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Alderman Cox?
Here.
Alderman Gregory?
Here.
Alderman Williams?
Here.
Alderman Rockford?
Present.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Here.
Alderwoman Natriano?
Here.
Alderman Carlson?
Here.
Alderwoman Conley?
Present.
Alderman Donlin?
Here.
Alderman Hanauer?
Here.
Mayor Buscher?
Present.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you Clerk Redpath. The civility pledge, in the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. There are no proclamations or presentations this evening, so we are going to run right into the zoning agenda. First item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2025-029 for the property located at 1921 Lowell Avenue.
I move that we continue this to November 18th.
We have a motion to continue, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, motion and second, any discussion from the Alders? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes, thank you Alderwoman Natriano. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2025-037 for the property located at 1300 Toronto Road. The petitioner is New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, doing business as AT&amp;T Mobility. The present zoning classification is B1 Highway Business Service District, Section 155.033. The requested zoning relief is conditional permitted use pursuant to Sections 155.402K Use Regulation, wireless telecommunication facilities, antennas, monopoles, towers, and satellite dishes, and 155.407, conditional permitted use, and variance of Sections 155.001 Definitions Lot, to allow for two uses on one lot, the proposed communications facility with tower at 100 feet height, fencing and generator and equipment, and including future redevelopment of the lot, and 155.405D landscaping and aesthetic requirements to not add buffer plantings to the west, east, and south sides of the fenced area. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is approval as submitted. The Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is approval to concur with the staff recommendation. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the staff recommendation, any discussion from the Alders? Seeing none, the voting will now be open, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no. And the motion carries with 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2025-040 for the property located at 1987 Wabash Avenue. The petitioners are Springfield Clinic LLP, the present zoning classification is R1, Single Family Residence District, Section 155.015, with core ordered S2 uses. Requested zoning relief is reclassification to B2, General Business Service District, Section 155.034. Petitioner additionally requests that if the reclassification to B2 is not afforded, a use variance that permits a wholesale and commercial storage use on the subject real estate. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is denial of the requested B2 zoning, but approval of the S2 zoning with a use variance to allow wholesale and commercial storage uses as described in the petition. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is concur with the staff recommendation of approval for S2 with a use variance to allow wholesale and commercial storage. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the planning and zoning recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the planning and zoning recommendation, any discussion from the Alders? Seeing none, the voting will now be open, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no.
I'm a yes.
And the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. This will now conclude the zoning portion of the meeting.
I didn't see anybody for a minute.
The Chair will now recognize Treasurer Redpath, figure for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you Madam Mayor. The Treasurer's Report for the Corporate Fund for the month of September, the beginning balance is $62,519,738. We took in total receipts of $23,182,119. Total disbursements, $21,191,18, which left the Corporate Fund ending balance in the month of September at $59,510,839. The ending general fund balance includes $7,568,506, which was the September ending ARPA balance. That concludes my report, thank you.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the Treasurer's Report as submitted, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. The Chair now recognizes the Director of Office of Budget Management, Director Metzger, for any questions that you might have on the OBM contract report, or is there any questions from the Alders? Seeing none, we will move forward. The Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the October 14th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting and approve the minutes.
Still move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
Still move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. The Chair will now entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading Agenda Item Numbers 2025-457, 2025-458, and 2025-459.
Still move.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, I'll read these in real quick if you don't mind. 2025-457, An Ordinance Authorizing the Approval of an Agreement Between the City of Springfield and the Springfield Firefighters Local 37 of International Association of Firefighters from March 1st, 2025 through February 28th, 2029. 2025-458, An Ordinance Authorizing the Acceptance of Contract Number 122123DEM from McQueen Equipment LLC for the purchase of one Demers MXP 170 Type 1 apparatus for an amount not to exceed $336,902 for the Springfield Fire Department. 2025-459, An Ordinance Approving Salary Increases in Excess of 5% During a 12-Month Period for the Springfield Fire Department Command Staff. So we had a motion and a second, any discussion on the first reading of those ordinances? And then once the clerk has stamped them, you will get copies of them. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate a pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
Still move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. The Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
Still move, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? Seeing none, voting will now be open, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. Agenda Items 2025-247, 2025-281, and 2025-422 remain tabled or in committee. I don't think there's any action on those, I hand those to you, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is Item Number 2025-394, An Ordinance Authorizing Execution of an Annexation Agreement between the City of Springfield, Illinois and Jason Campbell and Lindsay Campbell for the property located at 1150 Old Toronto Road for the Office of Public Works. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda...
We're going to have a public hearing first.
Okay, so we will first open up a public hearing for that Agenda Item 2025-394 that you see, can I get a motion for a public hearing?
Still move.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for a public hearing for 2025-394, which is the annexation agreement. Before we go to the crowd, is there any Alders that need to speak on this? Seeing none, is there anyone in the crowd here for the public hearing on this annexation item? Seeing none, I will take a motion...
To adjourn and return to City Council?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the public hearing and return to City Council, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. So now, Item Number 2025-394, the Chair will entertain a motion to place the agenda on final passage.
Still move.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the annexation document? Seeing none, voting will now be open, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no.
I'm a yes.
Okay, thank you Alderman Williams. And the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda would be 2025-396, which happens to be an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between the City of Springfield, Illinois and Sherri S. Lynch and Robert D. Lynch for the property located at 5953 Iron Bridge Road for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to go into a public hearing on this item, please.
Still move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a public hearing on 2025-396, which is the annexation agreement. Any comments from the Council or discussion on this annexation agreement? Seeing none, we will go out to the crowd. Is there anyone from the crowd here to speak on the annexation agreement for the property at 5953 Iron Bridge Road?
Motion to dismiss, to adjourn the...
Public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the public hearing, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. So, the Chair will now entertain a motion to put Agenda Item 2025-396 on final passage.
Still move.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, the voting will now be open, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is 2025-408, An Ordinance Authorizing Acceptance of a Proposal Under RFPCS 19-29, an execution of an agreement with Marilyn Ann Young for the purchase of city-owned property consisting of five parcels and the amount of $2,500 for the Office of Budget and Management. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Item Number 2025-408.
Mayor, make a motion to amend 2025-408?
Thank you Alderman Carlson.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for an amendment for 2025-408, and in front of you is the amendment, and it is amending the purchase of the parcels from five parcels to two parcels, and the amount will then go down to $1,000. Is there any discussion from the Alders on the motion of the amendment itself? Okay, seeing none, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. So now the Chair will accept a motion to accept the amended 2025-408 for final passage. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this ordinance from the Alders? Seeing none, and did we have anybody signed up to speak on any of it? Seeing none, the voting will now be open, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. Do the Alders have any unfinished business to bring before the City Council this evening? Alderman Gregory?
Thank you Mayor. Um, yes, Corporation Counsel, we had a brief discussion on this TIF, our new TIF program, our community program, and the eligible things, we have gotten some calls, me and Alderman Williams have gotten some calls about denial letters and things with that, which is concerning, and I know we talked about interior, exterior, and then following, um, the last program where it was 10 and 25%, and my understanding, you got that correct, and I'm asking because I just want to be on the same page of what we're trying to bring to our community, credit this program for to really reduce the barriers within those programs. There's supposed to be no match, interior, exterior, we definitely want to prioritize those are first in need, but I don't think anybody should be denied anything because it's their tax money, it's that area's tax money. So I, can you speak to me on that?
So, I got your message yesterday regarding the denials, and I have not seen the copies of those, so I will go into them and look at them, and I'm happy to work with you as far as the interior and exterior. As I, you know, as we discussed, the examples that were given in the ordinance were all exterior programs, and it looked like it was drawn from our exterior rehab program. We did include a catch-all, all eligible TIFs, which I interpreted to mean the engineering and attorney's fees and kind of those additional items that can come with a TIF project. I understand that that was not your intention when putting forward as the sponsor, so again, I'm happy to talk with you and OPED about that, once we get the denials and continue working on that.
All right, just want to be totally clear, our goal is to improve our community and remove as many barriers as we can that we've seen in the past to hang people up on the progress on their houses or businesses. This is an unfinished one, so that's all on that one, and you know, I'm probably going to have a laundry list of things to talk about for a second here. My Alder sister, Ms. Amy, asked about this Recompete Grant, she's been passionate about it, I know a little conversation was going on Tuesday, where are we at with that and what are we going to see from that? Sure.
In regard to the Recompete Grant, which was a planning grant for the City of Springfield, we have, I just reached out to Chief of Staff who will pass this on, we will be prepared to do a presentation on where we're at, what we've accomplished with that grant, the deliverables. The grant does end in January, however, we can extend it so we can continue to use those funds that are available and to maximize that use, we're working with Community Relations on some of their program that reaches the goals of the grant, and so I'm working with our Chief of Staff and the Mayor to get on the agenda for mid-November, and we'll do a presentation.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, all right, thank you, I don't know if Alderwoman has it anymore.
Alderman Gregory, do you mind if Alderwoman Purchase chimes in?
No, not at all.
Okay.
I think too, when I was asked about it, the first time I brought it up, I know it's been about several weeks, and I wanted the, my other colleagues who weren't familiar with it to understand what it was, I just knew about it because Dr. Kira was working on it, and it was something that she was speaking with me about and passionate, and it got me excited, so I wanted everybody to know, and then we were at a luncheon with Congresswoman Nikki Bozinski, and she expressed how she helped to bring that money forward, and someone asked about more money for downtown, and she's saying like, well, these are things that I'm doing here, so I wanted everyone to know like what's going on, and I know it's been taking a little bit of time, because I just spoke with you recently when I was going to Mordock's office about how are we doing, can we express it and show it, so you're just saying now you're going to bring a presentation?
Absolutely, we'll have a presentation ready. Working with the consultants, what part of the process was gathering data, so those data, that data has been gathered, we were preparing it in documents, it is going to be valuable information that we can use for a variety of grant applications, we can use for a variety of analysis as we look in our communities, and how we can do, it was really based on prime employment gap, and how we can look at that, so there's some valuable data, and we will have that gathered and be able to present it publicly.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
Yes, thank you, that's all on that subject, but if you could stay, so we talked about, I'm sorry, I promise you this is going to be it. My guys are getting me if I go too much, but, so last week, we talked about violence prevention, I know there's some people signed up about violence prevention, and this is going to start off with our community connections running along into something else, but, so, you know, I know everybody was applauding that last week, and we all are in agreement on violence prevention efforts, and we've had some things come before us. Jermaine Ward, for instance, he's out doing a house for us right now. Some of you may have not been here, but most of us was. He brought us a plan before, to help. Now he's doing one house, great, one man doing one house, but the plan that he brought us was to do five houses and use 11, 12 young people from the community in violence prevention efforts. I'm pushing right now to do some different things with our violence prevention grant that we got from Senator Turner, I can tell you, the caucus, our conversations have really, really been to push for some more funding down to address these issues. So as we go forward, you know, we're going to be pushing for this, and I hope that we have the support that we showed and the enthusiasm that we showed when these things come forth. So Ms. Amy, my question for you is, that $400,000 that we did not approve for a previous project, what did we do with that funding, do you remember?
I will be able to get that for you, but I know it was distributed or allocated so that we could use it to do other related things, so we do, when we have a grant like that, we still have to accomplish something within the scope of that program, just like we're doing with Recompete and with Dr. Kira, no longer at the leadership of that, what she left behind, and what we can do moving forward to utilize the scope of that grant, so let me get you that information, okay?
Can you get that information of what we did with that, and then, I know you're working on it, I know we just passed our allocation, but what have we put in for workforce development wise in our communities?
One of the specific things that did go into that consolidated plan with CBDG funds is working with Lincolnland on their workforce development program, and some scholarships that they can help us administer, so they get in the right hands of the people in need, and get them qualified and get them a job right out the door.
Right, and I think all this has to flow well with what we're doing with our police, this, our community, and finally, I think we just have to think about how we just got allocation, I know one of the recipients, they're waiting, I think they have somebody out there speaking on it, but they asked for 150, they do violence prevention, they're from our community, that's what they do, they just opened up a new community center, they asked for 150 and they got 15,000. So, those are the type of things that we will preach, that we serious about it, we preach that we want to do our community, but those things don't match up with what's actually happening, and I get it, there's some other organizations that do good work as well, but as we see, we really have to prioritize getting the community that lives there every day, deals with this every day, involved in the healing process.
Absolutely, and you know, we looked at that too, when it comes to, we can use so much for facilities and so much for programming, and we met with each of the Alders regarding what was in their ward and how we can look at that, but we can continue to look at that funding, right now, you know, we don't, we certainly hope that that funding is still going to come through from our federal government, but we're certainly planning accordingly, we're trying to be proactive, we're starting to sign, you know, we'll be calling people in to go over agreements with them, so we are moving forward with even sometimes what people necessarily wanted compared to what they received, but there will be allocations being made.
I'm just speaking on just the violence prevention efforts and who we will work with, and what we're, you know, really digging deep.
But I will specifically get you the answers to how that money was allocated.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it, that is all on new business for me, thank you, I appreciate you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Williams? You wore Alderman Rockford out, he already took his button off.
They mistreat me all the time, Mayor, but thank you. Yeah, no, no, I didn't need you, I just wanted to back up though with Corporate Counsel and maybe my brother here, on the denial letters, maybe I do need you, Amy, I just want to see you walk, no. On this issue of denial letters, I've got a few emails and calls on the denials, I want some clarity on, when we help people with their homes, whether it's a roof or whatever it is, in particular TIF, now these actions are based on location, not income, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so what I feel has happened is, I have a subdivision called Eastview, it's bordered by Eastdale and Livingston, and it's my newer part, one of my newest subdivisions, I'll say it like that, homes are beautiful, neighborhood is beautiful, but they got denial letters. Now, some of them may be better off than a lot of other parts of my ward, but I think, I just want to make sure ain't no confusion, we're not using income, because they are within the maps of what this money is...
Of the area of the TIF, absolutely. I can assure you, we're not using income, we are looking at greatest need, I can tell you right now, we have six completed applications that are moving forward, we have 21 incomplete applications, what we'd like to do, and we'd really appreciate you encouraging those folks to get those missing pieces in, be it something we've asked them for a deed, we've asked them for, we can tell you specifically if you'd like what some of those things are, I don't have those in front of me, but we have 21 pending applications, and if things go forward, right now, we've got over $710,000 worth of applications that we're reviewing.
Yes.
We have to look at the greatest need as well, the contractors are turning in, and our inspectors are looking at, like for instance, a roof, it was said that there could be some damage, the contractor noted no damage, but the roof is, you know, 20 some years old, but there's not damage comparatively, there might be somebody with a hole in their roof, so at some point, we are going to have to look at how we can move forward, but I know there needs to be some clarity on denial letters, there needs to be some clarity on what we're covering, and we will work through that. So we are in communication with these folks, if, you know, if it comes to the point where we're going to say, you know what, we've been able to review this and move forward, we will, but one of the best things I could ask for support for our office right now is continuing to process the ones that we have, we have a lot of missing pieces, and we've been trying to show examples, we certainly make copies for them, so you don't have to come in with all copies, because everybody has access to a copy machine, things like that, but if they bring in the things that are needed, we can move forward with that application. Remember, everything's an application, it's not a guarantee, but we do want to look at each one, and we are not looking at income, they do have to provide income information, that's one of the standard pieces of information, but that is not a basis for approval or denial.
So, these are folks who actually got denial letters, and I think it's gone to the greatest need, who's deciding what's the greatest need, what's the least needed, I mean, is it inspector, or is it you?
Yeah, we have both an inspector and the contractor that came out, their proposed contractor, that would come out and say, you know, the roof could use repla, but they're not noting any specific damage, the photos are not showing any specific damage, there may be a house that's got siding on it, and there's one panel, the siding that looks perhaps warped in some way, the rest of the siding, it's not a health, safety, or climate type issue concern at this time, where we do have those that definitely are having, you know, water coming in their roof, so on and so forth, I mean, that's just one example.
So it's kind of based on points or, when they do this evaluation of why they're applying for the fix, they feel like it's because they're in their situation, and it's not as bad as the others who are also applying that are bad, but they didn't want the perception or their income being used against them, so out of all those many, I can only think of two right now that are saying, Alderman, I got my cameras, there's been no inspection, there has not been anybody from the city to come out to even look at it, and they're failing, I'm just saying.
But these programs have been handled a little differently.
Like, hey, these guys made a judgment without even coming out looking at what I applied for, which was a part of the process. So, I'll talk with you about those two anyway.
Absolutely.
That are saying that to others, I'll just have to live with the fact that, you're right, you have to make some kind of judgment, and if you're using a point system and it's fair and we're called on it, and we can justify that decision, there's nothing more I can do as Alderman, but when they say that perception is we're doing so well, our houses are so nice, that all of us got denied, and I just want to make sure that ain't true.
Can I say something? I just feel like nobody, in this program here, nobody should be denied in the TIF. Now, they may be delayed because we have some more important ones, now the other programs from the federal government under CBDG, you know, those things, yes, because they have income guidelines and stuff, but this is their tax money, they pay into those taxes, so they should be eligible for it, they should be able to use it, you know, I'm sure that everybody will understand a hole in the roof is more important than a piece of siding, but that's important to them, and that's what they're paying to.
It's important to them, and we respect that. So as Corporation Counsel pointed out, we'll be revisiting some of the things that you pointed out, Alderman Gregory, regarding what was the intent, and we'll continue to go forward, but communication is key.
Absolutely.
And we are remaining in communication with these folks, so.
And I hear you clearly, I will be emphasizing that they must get into you the documents that you are requiring.
I appreciate that very much, because then we can, you know, then somebody won't say, well, we're waiting forever to hear back, or to, you know, move through the process, and if there's anything at all, we have a woman that can't find the deed to her home, so, you know, we've been able to point her to the direction of where she could go for that deed, things like that, so we are trying to offer as much assistance as we can, we put together a packet that kind of shows each piece that's needed, so we actually took that out in the community when we were at the community room meeting with people, so when, you know, if you use a word like deed, or for a business, what your business license looks like, we showed them an example of it, because some of it can be, it's very daunting to get all those documents together, and then of course, when they do come in the office, we work with them, and we'll certainly make those copies, so they don't need to, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Purchase?
Director Amy?
Yes.
Before you leave. To piggyback off of what both of Alderman Williams and Alderman Gregory, me and Alderman Gregory was at a Rotary meeting that you had presented at, and you did an awesome job, and we learned a lot of new information by being there to listen to you, and then I had a few friends and neighbors that was at the Historic West Side Neighborhood Association meeting that you went to.
As was Alderwoman Conley.
Yes, so seeing that you're giving out good information, like at just those two meetings that I'm aware of, we wanted to request to bring a meeting together with the community so you can come and present too for that. And we can help you to gather people so that you will be able to give some of that same information out. Because that's answering a lot of the questions that you're answering right now here. So we can gather some people from the community and have you come and present if you're open to that.
Certainly, absolutely, we're available, we're trying to do more and more outreach. As we know, we've got programs that we always need to look at and review after they're implemented. We can always learn from what's going on, we can learn from the next round of cannabis, all of those things. But at the same time, we also, I was making sure that wasn't mine, it wasn't my ringtone. It's time for me to go. But that being said, we can always learn from that, we have another one scheduled, we'll be at Harvard Park on the 29th. We are doing, I think, more and more outreach, we're very pleased to do that and
Well, we don't want you having to run all over, so we want, three want to work together and bring everybody together in one location for you and we can work on those dates.
And we want to do, if appropriate, we want to do another of these neighborhood TIF kind of open houses like what we did. That did help people look at the paperwork and get the paperwork in their hands. And then we can further elaborate on things that we're all discussing and moving forward, alright?
Thank you, and so we will work with you to get some dates together so we can put on something in the community for you to come and present it. Then the second thing I wanted to just piggyback on, as Alderman Gregory was talking about a, one entity that's like out in the community. So, yes, it was a very tragedy that happened and we have both of those funerals coming up this weekend. We know people who are ingrained into the community with those type of individuals. We want to make sure that they're getting the funding to be able to help like we're talking about, wanting to see people working with those individuals. They're not always going to go to the fun organizations to do things. They need people who connect with them and really look like them and have been in trouble like they've been in trouble before. So I'm not for sure how you determine that amount that Sean just said. It went from 150,000 to 15,000 to one entity that we know could do that work in the community. And we want to be as effective as possible if we need to help bridge that gap and figure out what we need to do so that we can try to eliminate some of the situations that may come up. It's easy for people to say, hey, let's get together, let's work together, but not everybody can touch them the way some individuals can.
Right, and we've looked at all the funding and we will continue to look at that and appreciate your input on that. And we'll continue to engage you like we did when we brought you in one at a time and talked about that funding. So thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Thank you Alderman. Alderman Williams, are you okay?
I'm okay, I'm waiting for new business.
Okay, so that finished old business, now we're on to new business and Alderman Williams, you're first.
Okay, I just want to let my colleagues, well, my colleagues are very much aware that way back, let's just say, you know, the mayor's first day. We had an ordinance for landlord registration that I had put in and it got tabled. And then it was no movement, I couldn't get it out of committee and some of you guys wasn't here, you know, but, I know. However, since then, we had a little small committee, made of two of my caucus members. And Ms. Alderman Conley, again, nothing introduced, nothing really done. So we played, I call it a stall game and it makes them mad, but I'll just say, we haven't produced as a council. And back then, that long ago, people were here saying they had problem with their housing. So, I would like for you to know that I'm submitting an ordinance and you'll be hearing from folks from here until we go through the process. This ordinance, you know, so if you need to tie it on, when you want to recognize, it's going to be the residential rental inspection and landlord licensing program. Now, a lot of work has went in, through a lot of people, even outside of Springfield, just coalitions of people. So as you start hearing about it, the reason why I'm speaking on it now, because I want you to be aware, they're speaking to something that's going through, going to go through Murdoch's office and get put into our ordinance farm. And then we'll go through our process, first reading, you know, all the way through the process. So I just wanted to make you aware and I'm asking your support, because I think if you read it, it is doable, our part. We have a part in this of a lot of other people that have parts to include the state. So please be serious about it and consider it. I think we're overdue with trying to do some kind of action in this area because of what happened and we haven't moved. I have a timeline now, from when I introduced it, it got put in committee, we had this little committee shuffle thing going, never, nothing got produced. Let's try to join the community and support them as they present and as the ordinance moves through to do our part, because there's many moving parts, thank you.
Anything else, Alderman Williams?
That's it mayor, thank you.
Alderman Carlson.
Thank you mayor, I had a constituent reach out and just wanted to remind everybody that tonight will be the final Honor Flight landing at Capitol Airport at 9:30, so. Should you find yourselves free at 9:30? Join the Honor Flight at 9:30, so thank you mayor.
Yep, Alderman Purchase.
Thank you mayor, I wanted to first say thank you to Alderman Donnellan and Alderman Notriano for attending the blood drive and DMV service on Saturday with me. We were able to save up to 21 lives with the amount of blood that we had drawn, as well as giving out stickers, renewals. And we broke barriers, we had individuals who, this was their first time getting an actual real ID and a license here in Illinois. And we built trust with the community for them to feel like they could come to us and mobilize those services. So I just want to thank the community for coming out and doing that and I wanted to thank my colleagues for showing up because it did matter to me. Thank you all.
Thank you Alderman. And I think that's it for any new business, so, Quick Redpath, you're up.
First is to speak to the council, Mark Turner.
I take care of my son, he broke his neck a while back, about 10 years ago, well, 15 now. I used to work at Memorial for 26 years with traumas, infectious disease. My first degree was in law enforcement and honestly, that was when affirmative action was kicked in and they ran out minorities to hire. I was hired, they ran out minorities, they sent me a letter. 25 years later, they wanted to hire me, I could work for a year, get full pension. I'd already gone back to school and got another degree. That's my background, I worked traumas, flight transport, kind of why I live out by the airport. What I'm here about though, is sometimes the political process, and it's necessary. I'm really frustrated around here, some of the things, my hat's off to you, what you go through all the time. One of my good friends for a long time was the city clerk, Norma Graves. Jean Graves, her husband, both of them were going to adopt me, that's how old I am, it was a long time ago. Kenny Graves was my best friend, Leslie Graves was a judge that I used to play and tried to save her from her older brothers. So I ended up playing and entertaining for her fundraisers. Done a variety of things here in Springfield, I lived throughout the Southwest, that's my background. Right now, I sit on Buckhorn Drive, north of town, and I've been there since 1985. My house looks like a log cabin, kind of sticks out, hopefully it's not a sore thumb. It's right in the middle of a subdivision with a bunch of vinyl siding, so it does stick out. I put a front porch for a reason, so people could get to know me as well as I get to know them. They build too many houses with just front stoops where people go in and all they see is the boob tube. That's all they see, that's all they know. You want to know why you're divided, there's a big reason. On your phone or in that, I'll stop with the other grandstanding, but the bottom line is that I pretty much keep to myself and take care of my son. And he depends on his animals, he's quadriplegic. I've cared for so many people that are paralyzed permanently, whether ventilator dependent or not. Picked up a lot of people in the helicopter on those situations. My son has a very limited existence these days, as much as I would like to get him out, he's very self-conscious here. And you'll see as I'm verbose here, I'm not as much self-conscious. There's some things could be simply fixed by standing up for what's right. And there's too many people that are concerned about the political viewpoints or how they're looked at. Or if they're going to lose their job, or somebody's going to be offended. Just discussing things shouldn't be that, shouldn't do that. I'm simply here just to get a, so that the city doesn't keep saying, well, it's in the county. And the county doesn't keep saying it's in the city. And we've already had one child die, being pulled by a red wagon years ago by her stepfather, who was making a trip to the Shell Station that's on Hackmore and Route 29, it's right across from the airport. And he was going there, I'm sure, to get a six pack, that's what I think it was. But the bottom line is this, no lights on Hackmore, hasn't been since I've been out there. And I've heard since I've been out there that they were going to put sidewalks. I don't understand why they're not there. You've lost one life, I've taken care of traumas in my own, in my own trauma bay at Memorial. Where they came in and my neighbors flipped a Jeep going down Hackmore full speed, there's no lighting, there's none. It's dark at night and people are forced to walk up to the Shell Station and it gets dark around what, 5, 4:30 sometimes even, as dusk? And that's the most difficult time. Now, I'm self-conscious of it because I've, my son, when he does get out, he's gone to the Shell Station to go up and get a Coke with his younger brother who's 26, he's currently back in college. And he would push him in his wheelchair up there, scared me to death. Which my neighbor even called me and said, you know, it's kind of dangerous there. I said, I'm very well of it, but Matthew doesn't get out much. So, here I am as a father going, damn. Silly enough, actually, I think it's fraud. We took money here in Springfield to build two corner, one there, one there, here's the Shell Station, I'm facing west. A handicap access to go down the road, the ramps, you know, you've seen them all been to make it handicap access. They go off into ditches. Now, that was federal funding that paid for employment, I get it. But that was, I asked them how much it was, it was 15 to 20,000 dollars each side. And they go off into ditches, they're useless, they just sit there.
Now, it would be great if it went apart where you just go to another sidewalk where you're safe and you're not motorizing in a wheelchair or walking or jogging or kids being drawn up there to go get candy at the Shell Station.
Sir, your time is up, but Alderman Rockford has asked to speak if you would mind, do you mind staying there?
That one, and also I want to see speed bumps on Buckhorn Drive, I just lost a cat. And my whole point was coming here was that people speed up and down Buckhorn all the time.
And you'll let the Alderman speak, thank you.
That's it.
Hey, Director Fuchs, would you get the vicinity where these sidewalks? Okay.
So to me, that's an issue.
Just go over to the director and then he'll talk to you.
Thank you.
Thank you Alderman Rockford.
Hewitt Douglas.
Good evening mayor, council people, whoever you are. You know who I am and I've been here several times. They asked me what I wanted to talk about and of course, Lincoln Tower. I want to report to you, at least on this end from the tenants, we got seemingly a lot of new tenants moving in. They're a lot younger than me, but I'm an old guy. So, you know, they got pets that, you know, I don't like pets, because they bark at me. The littlest little thing the other day barked at me, standing in his owner's arms, safe and but he growled where it was fearsome and I think that's the biggest thing. We got a lot of new folks coming in here and it's concern to a lot of residents that's there, but that's not your issue. It's management issue. They got a new elevator, they haven't put a floor in it yet. You laughed at that, but we do have a new elevator, I want everybody in the city to know, Lincoln Tower has a new elevator. Still got two old ones though, remember that. And I still could walk up 16 flights. It's very important that I also speak on an issue that came to me from a lot of renters around the city. About property owners and landlords. The Faith Coalition for the Common Good, which is the organization I truly believe in, tells me, and I didn't know, that a lot of the city ordinances that we pass here affect those on certain parts of town different than others. It is very important for us to act like we see the other side of the fence, right? You're arguing now, or not arguing, but discussing about what the east side, and we all know what that means. The west side got all the pretty sidewalks, everything's perfect. Young man was up here talking about by the airport, I've always thought that was the city. And he all tells me that that's an argument about whether it's the city or this, you know, who votes up there. Bottom line is that my landlord, other landlords in this city got to do better at being able to support themselves and their city downtown. We have very little chance of any housing downtown unless somebody with a lot of money comes in and buys a lot. The mall is now closing and they bought the new mall across the street, the Open Air Mall, for a ridiculous amount of money. But the thing is, everything's going west, nothing's going east. You got your sports complex, should have been on the east side, but you put it out there.
Brother brought it first.
That's alright, I got my time to speak and that's what I'm doing. Police in this town need to learn how to get along. I'm just telling you mayor, realistically, your police chief refusing Just think, move it.
Uh huh, it was.
Refuse, I'm pretty big leaning I guess. Your police chief, as I read, refuses to meet with a group because of one woman. If one woman scares him, I don't think he need to be police chief. I'm just saying, you must be crazy. He's a public servant, he works for you. Everything in this city affects all of us. And yes, Lincoln Tower is where I live, I love living downtown, it's the most beautiful view in town. I'm telling you. But it can't be treated like it's just some other piece of property. The east side needs help, downtown needs help, everything's going west. I'm sorry, I pick on you folks out west, but you got it good. You don't know how dang good you got it. I'm just saying, it's very important that this city council get along. Republican or Democrat, get along, please. I'll still be back when we get along now.
Thank you sir.
I bless you, that's my time.
Thank you.
Roxanne Casey.
Doctor, Doctor Roxanne Casey.
Good evening, good evening mayor.
Good evening.
Bushard.
Good evening.
Aldermen, Aldermen women, city officials, community members. Thank you for this opportunity to share my experience. I am Dr. Roxanne Casey. Member of Faith Coalition. And I reside in Ward 1. When I think about Springfield, at first I thought it was like a transit city when I first came in 1995. Because of school, higher education, government, and people just come in to just gather themselves. It was when I heard our mayor, current mayor, doing her Merrill, Merrill, Merrill during her mayoral, mayoral, mayor... Yes, campaign, say five words. And I'm sorry. Can somebody come read this? Um, um...
Take your time, system.
It's you to read this because...
My read is on behalf of Doctor Roxanne Casey.
Is that okay with you, ma'am?
Yes, please.
All right. When I used to think of Springfield, I thought that this was a transit city where people came to get trained via higher education, government, and making a transition to gather themselves. It was when I heard our current mayor during her mayoral campaign say five words that sticks with me today. She saw how money was leaving our city, the first responders were not gathering their fair share, and how members in our community were being treated like second-class citizens. Her words were life-changing for me when she said, "I have to save my city." I'm here to plead with the city council to save our city. Landlords are essential in our community. Our landlords are, all landlords are not neglectful regarding their properties, but we have experience in our city where businessmen and businesswomen have come into Springfield purchasing property and neglecting to upkeep and manage our, their properties, leaving their tenants in a very difficult situation. The rising cost of rentals is making it very difficult for tenants to manage monthly obligations. As citizens and residents, we need affordable housing, landlord accountability, so people who purchase property are here to, is here to be reached in a timely manner. I think that's what you said. Let's save our city. We can do better together.
Thank you both. Thank you both.
Ayesha Dill.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Alderpersons. My name is Ayesha, and I live in Madison Park Place. I am one of Faith Coalition Housing Ambassadors in Madison Park Place area, Ward Three. I want to share my experience and why I believe landlord licensing and registration is necessary in Springfield. I have been living in what feels like hell for the past two years. The Bear Development Company out of Wisconsin began reservations in our, in our property with no, with little to no transparency for our residents who actually live there. The Springfield Housing Authority increased our rent by three hundred dollars, even though work on many of our units remain incomplete. We are being harassed back for back rent and even threatened with, with eviction for speaking up about their unfair practices. Maintenance requests go unanswered for months, and some residents have waited nearly a year for basic repairs. It often feels like there are chosen people whose issues get addressed while others are ignored. Renters deserve better. We pay rent and deserve livable, healthy housing. As rent prices continue to rise across Springfield, tenants should not be forced to live in conditions that don't match the cost we're paying. And landlord licensing and registration programs would hold property owners accountable and make sure they meet standards, standards of, basic standards of pro, of safety and maintenance. It would assure that renters would have a voice and that landlords cannot continue to benefit while neglecting their responsibilities. Without accountability, these things will only get worse. Passing this ordinance is about fairness, dignity, and respecting the people who makes Springfield home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tasha Robertson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Tasha Robertson. I live here in Springfield, Illinois. I am here tonight, concerned resident and member of this community who deeply cares about the safety, dignity, and stability of our neighborhoods. We need constant standards for property owners in our city. I had a family who lived in Old Town Apartments. And like so many others, they enjoyed convenience of that area, being close to their children's school, a park, laundromat, and a nearby gas station, and local stores. Families, seniors, and college students. Old Town wasn't just an apartment complex. It was home. And it was a part of their daily lives. But when landlords fail to maintain safe, livable housing, an impact goes beyond the building. In recent displacement, over a hundred and fifty residents from Old Town represented families not only have nowhere stable to go, elderly residents was forced to move after years in the same place, students who may now be disconnected from their schools and communities. Landlord neglect destabilizes neighborhoods. When buildings fall into disrepair, it doesn't just harm the tenants. It affects their entire community. Children walking past these unsafe properties on their way home from school see boarded-up doors, broken windows, and instead of stability and care conditions sends a message that neglect is acceptable and it should never be. Springfield deserves accountable, responsible landlords who maintain their property with the same care and respect that the tenants show in paying their rent and contributing to our community. A landlord licensing registration program will help ensure that property owners meet basic and health and safety standards. So, so families so much are displaced without warning, and no child has to grow up in surroundings that is unsafe housing. It is not about punishing them. We're not punishing the landlords. No, 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 we're not punishing them. It's about prevention. It's about setting a standard that protects everyone, renters, homeowners, and neighborhoods alike. I urge you, again, I say, I urge you, support the landlord licensing and registration referendum and make it a priority in 2026 general election ballot. Together, we can make Springfield a city where every resident, no matter where they live, have access to safe and a dignified housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenna Broom.
We can have, Joanna will come up. Just hand up.
I had to go digital today, guys, so sorry.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jenna Broom, and on behalf of the Faith Coalition for the Common Good, I would first like to invite everyone to our landlord license and registration conversation and mobilization this Thursday, October 23rd, at 6:00 p.m., right across the street at First Pres. Seamless transition. Okay, I didn't grow up in Springfield. I'm from the southernmost town in Sangamon County, Divernan. In a village of 1,100 people, there's not a huge demand for housing, but my late grandmother was one of a few landlords in town for multiple decades. By the time I became an adult, the once-large Brister Estates was little more than a couple properties on a mobile home court and a few houses scattered throughout town. Still, my grandma would always go on her daily rounds, checking on her properties and her renters. Everybody knew Mary, and the only frustrating thing I ever heard about her was that one might get stuck behind her big diesel Chevy truck while she did her rounds, driving about nineteen miles an hour and pausing at every single intersection. Folks would regularly come by her house to drop off rent checks, and my grandma always had a time for a chat, sometimes with an ice cold Dr. Pepper and RC, which were her favorites. So I guess I never really heard horror stories about landlords until I started renting in Chicago as a college student. And while I wouldn't live in my non-air-conditioned, probably lead-paint-filled undergrad apartment now, I am easily able to access a list of renter resources on the city of Chicago's website, should I have those issues. I was also a renter here in Springfield for a few years, and other than a persnickety dryer and a sketchy balcony, my experiences were pretty unremarkable. I have a lot of family members and friends who have not been that fortunate, and the city of Springfield's website doesn't seem to have much in the way of information for help, and if it does, maybe it should be easier to find. After my grandma died in 2017, I purchased my home in Ward Six. I fell in love with my neighborhood, diverse families, young people, folks decorate for the holidays, and apartments down the street. My time in Chicago showed me the value in residential diversity, and that should be embraced here as well. And even though I no longer rent, I still support the rights of renters. I hear all the time about city programs for homeowners like myself, which is awesome, but what about renters and landlords? A healthy community is one that welcomes and supports renters and homeowners alike. Not everyone can be or wants to be a homeowner. That doesn't mean those folks don't deserve dignity and safety. I want to live in a city where the type of housing should not dictate its safety or livability, where landlord information is easy to access for all citizens, where problems are prevented rather than dealt with later. Good landlords want a registry. Having a third party say, hey, this place is livable and safe, is a win. Makes them desirable, creates accountability, which anybody with any joy for a reputation should be happy about. A landlord that doesn't want a registry just doesn't sound like a good landlord to me. The only viable argument against licensing and regulation, registration is understandable, the cost, right? Cost to hire staff, pay their benefits, all those sort of things. Funding should always be evaluated, right? We should always look into new programs. But how much has been spent on the Old Town debacle? Or on the apartments out by Sacred Heart Griffin? How much money have we spent on that? If the city had a licensing program in place, the fees that those landlords would have paid could have gone towards landlord repair funds, and dozens of folks would still have housing. I ask this body to vote yes on a binding referendum to place the landlord license and registry on the ballot for the upcoming election. The citizens of Springfield, renters, homeowners, and landlords alike deserve to have a say in this issue. It is your responsibility to let the voters decide. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ann Logue.
So I'm working with the Faith Coalition, if you didn't notice. So we're working on this landlord registry, and we've been working on this for a couple of years now with various organizations. But Faith Coalition is the first one to really step it up. Okay, so just last weekend, when I was collecting signatures to put landlord licensing on the ballot, I spoke with a landlord who asked, what if the city keeps raising the fees for landlord registry? I thought it was a very valid point. However, we require other businesses to be licensed and inspected at a consistent price, so why not landlords? And why have they received special treatment? It's a business. It's important to also note that tenants for years have faced continuous rising rent and mobile home fees. Unlike the landlords, they have absolutely no voice. Mobile homes, which in the past used to be one place low-income people could find a portable housing quickly, now cost one thousand dollars a month for a single wide mobile home, probably not even new, not to mention escalating lot and additional fees thrown at them on a regular basis. Tenants now are basically being held hostage to various high rents because the only alternative is a year-long wait for public housing or Section Eight. If a tenant is fortunate enough to secure an affordable unit in the private sector, speaking up on basic safety and health issues has been avoided at times out of fear. And there are a lot of people that are afraid. I've been canvassing the city for the last couple of months, and people are afraid of their landlords. Not all of them, you know, we have a lot of good ones too, but there's this fear of eviction and getting their rent increased. This was taken from the Springfield Real Estate website, March 2025, to entice property owners that look, kind of look like that. I quote, "Citywide rental rates have climbed 3.5, 3.8% year over year, attributed to increased demand from young professionals, young professionals, government employees, and students. Average rent for one bedroom is 950. It used to be 905 last year." I bring this up because if we can't give them, our tenants, affordable spaces, we should at least try to ensure decent and stable living conditions. It is important to note that I have spoken with landlords as well and many homeowners that are in favor of regular inspections of rental properties because problem rental properties turn into a source of embarrassment, and we should be embarrassed to see all these properties being neglected. And it's an, it's also not to mention the miserable, unsafe living space for the tenants and the families that live there. Annual inspections would be a way to treat all landlords equally. I had a landlord who said, this property across the street never gets inspected, but I always do. So let's inspect them equally. And track the condition of rental units, both before and after a tenant has lived there. Annual business license fees in the city of Springfield range from $25 to $100 per year. This accountability could be a way to spotlight both landlord and tenant actions to reward responsible behavior or address destructive patterns. Many city inspectors use photographs as evidence to protect, protect the landlords and the tenants from neglect, false claims, and destructive behavior. This recent new ordinance targeting negligent corporate landlords is an after-the-fact process, not preventative. Smaller local landlords have also demonstrated abuse and neglect of their tenants and their properties and should be included in this process. All right, when I have talked to the city, I found out that we do have very many responsible and caring landlords here. I always take the time to ask the people I am petitioning or asking to be part of the petition how they are being treated, and I hear both good and bad. Many local landlords are more likely to be invested in the community and keep up their properties, and we should reward them with fewer inspections and fees as well as support for them in recovering from tenants who abuse their property. Many cities set up their inspection schedules so responsible landlords are only inspected every three to five years. This lack of accountability has gone on long enough. It's time to take action on this issue.
Thank you. Ms. Logue.
Ann.
Ms. Logue, sorry, I'm losing my voice. Alderman Purchase wanted to speak. Apologize, I'm losing my voice.
On your last page, you said, can you repeat that part about the tenant? So you said it takes accountability with the photos. What happens if you have a good, I mean, if you have a bad tenant, so they have the pictures of before and after?
Right.
And then after the tenant moves out, you see the damage that was done. What happens then? I didn't hear what you had said. I'm sorry, could you repeat it?
After that, I didn't have anything after that. You know, the city would have to figure out, you know, a way to look at that. But the main thing is, is that the landlords need to have that accountability for the tenants, too. We can't just have it all on the landlords, and those photos would help protect the landlords, and the tenants couldn't claim that the landlords were doing that.
Yeah, so like, for example, with the Housing Authority, if they do something like that, they're held responsible. If they don't fix it, they lose their voucher. So I was just wondering if you guys had something in place that you were coming up with?
No, I mean, I think that the city has some work to do to iron all this stuff out. It's not going to be a simple process. There's people who talk about the Airbnbs, somebody who has a room for rent, you know, in their house. So, I mean, it's not going to be a simple process, but it's definitely worth it. And I think that, you know, we deserve, you know, we deserve it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bob Cruto.
Mayor Alderman, I retired from City Water, Light, and Power in 2020 after 36 years of working in the Energy Services Office, where one of my functions was to do what I like to call energy triage. I would get a phone call from a disgruntled customer who said, I've got a $500 electric bill. I don't know what I'm going to do. So I could go out to the house and look and see what the problem were. And invariably, the issue was that a landlord who was not really a landlord, they didn't really know what they were doing, they would get a broken-down house, just move somebody into it, have them sign a lease, and then they would be, a month later, these people would get this bill, and they're stuck with the lease and incredibly high utility bills because of the inefficiency of the place. I had to try and work out some very low-cost, simple things that they could do, because the landlord wasn't willing to do anything about it. They said, just pay your rent. So to me, it seems that there should be some accountability, that when something like this is found, that landlords are required to make repairs, and within a certain timeframe, or at least let that person break the lease and move out. Typically, you would get a move-in, they would look at the utility bills, and maybe it was vacant before that, and so it didn't look like it cost much to rent that, to heat that place. And then they signed the lease, and now they've got a nightmare, you know, $300, $500 a month going forward. So I have been a landlord myself. I know there are bad renters. I've had several of them. It'd be nice to be able to train them going in. But I think having some level of inspection of the units is important in some way. I think a landlord to protect themselves could do inspections, but on the other hand, if a tenant has got issues with this place that is not being attended to by the landlord, there's got to be some way that that can be addressed. So it's a matter of economic survival. I mean, a lot of these people come in and they have very little money to spend at all, and now all of a sudden, they've got an enormous utility bill. So we did develop a low-cost, no-cost weatherization program, along with our energy audit systems, where we were training renters how to do simple repairs, something as simple as getting plastic grocery sacks and rolling them up and sticking them into the cracks that were, you know, it didn't cost anything, but it was going to cost a lot to not do that. I'd like to see the Energy Services Office reinstitute that low-cost weatherization workshops, and if the landlord's not going to do it, you know, the renter can do a lot of things that, if they know how to do it. So that's maybe another way of looking at that, bringing in CWLP to help out this issue. But in some way, we need to figure out what needs to be done and have ways of addressing those before people run into, you know, a lease that they can't afford, and they're going to, and they can afford their bills, and then they're saddled with that bill. They can't get another apartment if they can't pay off that high bill that they had from previous situation. So grace on all sides would be the answer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ken Pachia.
What I tell you? I told you, people would come. They'd talk about it. Landlord registry's not going away. This community has an expectation of you as a city council to start holding these people culpable. I sincerely hope it's not just residential with what you're going to be introducing, Roy. I sincerely hope that includes commercial realtors as well. And I'm sure you're going to get a lot of pushback on that, but I would fight for that. Otherwise, I'll consider it not good enough. Quite frankly, what's going on in this city in terms of the way the landlords are allowed to get away with things, especially larger commercial properties, such as the old Bally Vaughan that was brought up, that's a ghost from the past that still haunts us all. It's an eyesore, stuck across from an incredibly large and expensive high school. It's an embarrassment, just like too many other sections of this town. Failure to act. And I will note, though, I don't want you guys to just do it because a bunch of people show up and tell you to. Spend the time it takes to actually look at cities like Milwaukee, who has everything from 0% loan programs to help landlords that are nascent in getting their properties repaired, to rent abatement, to help keep the funding going where people are still paying rent, but it's held until the landlords actually make those repairs. That's called holding people accountable. It's very simple. Other cities have done this before. It's like I said last week, you want to see good leadership, it's not far away from you. You can find these ideas in front of you. You excuse my voice, I was busy yesterday at the rally for Sonia Massey in Peoria. I'll note that tomorrow is one of the last meetings for the Massey Commission on the 22nd over at Cap 1908. I strongly encourage, as I always do, all of you to come out. The only person I saw there last time was Sean. It's not a crack on anybody, but it might behoove you to consider that that commission is actually going to do more than just talk to county. It's talking to the city, too, and the school district. There's a lot of work to be done around here. And anyone in denial of that, anyone that thinks that it's going to get done by somebody else, well, maybe you're right. There is an election coming up soon. Maybe you won't be here. Maybe we'll have somebody else to deal with. Maybe if you keep showing your community that you're not going to show up, that you're not going to listen, that you're not going to take the time out of your day to do the job you chose to do, maybe you don't need to be here. It's that simple. Because quite frankly, the very last Massey Commission meeting will be on the 27th. I sincerely hope I see all of you there. Those recommendations really will be coming for the city. I hope you guys think, when you hear me talk, that I'm not just making this stuff up. What did I tell you was going to happen with the landlord registry? They're at the door, guys. Better start listening to that knocking, because I do pay attention, and I do go a lot of places, and I hear a lot of things. One of the things I've heard most recently was about the window. Some comments were made at Carlson's recent Community Connections meeting about the cost of demolishing versus keeping it and repairing it. I sincerely hope that you recognize that the low cost of demolishing is not the only cost to the community. You can sign the death warrant for downtown if you tear down the window. If you even start those discussions, I guarantee you, you will see a dearth of people leaving downtown and fleeing what they will consider a righteous nail in the coffin. If you remove what is not only a landmark, or consider even the cost of it beyond $25 to $30 million to demolish it, it's a lot more than that. This city needs a place like that. What are we going to replace it with? Some cheap-looking Ramada? I mean, come on, guys. There's more to the window than just the idea of a hotel. There's more to it, and what it means to downtown, and what it will mean to downtown by removing it, you might as well just snatch its hard hat. It's frustrating, because a lot of times I see these shortcuts and these easy ways of getting things done. I sincerely hope when we get to the landlord registry that we don't see the same thing. I hope that the realtors and the landlords in this town don't eviscerate it to please themselves, because I don't really care what they want. Quite frankly, they make enough money off the backs of the rest of us for me to be worried about a little bit less money in their pockets. It's frustrating that when I go to these Massey Commission meetings, that a lot of what they're talking about are the things that you will hear at these council meetings. They're actually talking about solutions. And that's the thing, a lot of times people come up here, and we're asked to provide those solutions. I don't have that kind of money, and I definitely don't have that kind of time. I wish that I did. I really do. I wish that's what I got to do when I leave here, when I get up in the morning, but I don't. I have to take the time out of my day, my free time, my days off, to spend getting acquainted with all the things that council after council has failed to confront, or kick down the road, or move past, or placate long enough to get it off their plate. Please don't do that. Please don't do that with the Massey Commission recommendations. Please don't do that with this upcoming landlord registry. Please take the time to get it right, because it costs all of us in the end.
James Johnson.
Mayor.
Alderman Purchase.
I see Katia's over here. I know that Alderman Williams is bringing forward the ordinance. What I just heard from Ken is accurate, and under the Housing Authority, if you have a tenant, and say for instance that they have something that they have to fix, they get a certain amount of days to fix it. If it's the landlord, they get it up to three times. If you don't get it fixed, then you don't get paid until it gets fixed. Can you check into that, too, as you're working with Alderman Williams, and Mordock, as you're working with Alderman Williams on his ordinance?
Yeah, I will look into that and talk with Alderman Williams about that.
Thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Real quick, on that note, just to be clear, it's a referendum that he wants, that is requested to put to the people. Am I correct in that, sir?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Johnson.
21 days, government shutdown, and it's going to get worse. And you talk about mental illness? Get ready for it. But before I get into the meat of that, because you know this, I didn't have a subject, because there's just so much going on, I'm going to offer some advice to the city council, especially over here. For the community, for us who live in the community, I'm going to give you three things. You can write it down that would really help us out. One, can we have a shred day, where people in our community can bring stuff to be shredded? Two, can we have a day where we get to throw tires away? Because I'm tired of seeing tires thrown all across our community, because nobody wants to get rid of them properly. And three, mattresses. We need a day for mattresses, because for some reason, people like throwing out their mattresses, because waste people will not pick them up, and it costs so much money. So those are just three things that will help our community out big time to help clean it up. Now let me move into the meat of everything else. What y'all just heard about rent going up, food going up, cost of living going up, and the government snatching every dime in program to help support, that equals disaster. My favorite word is disruption, and it comes in different forms. And the cost of rent, and the government snatching money, and a lot of people don't even know if they're going to have a job, starts working on your psyche and mentalness. And we need to take what's happening real serious. And I'm really concerned about our community, because I ain't done the statistics, but I'm going to guess there's more renters over here than over there. Yeah. How do people make it? How do people feed themselves? And I want to question, and somebody can answer it at the end, when the food bank gives away food, how do our community hears about it? Because the only way I knew about it is when I drove down Cook Street and saw the line of cars. So I don't know if my Alderman knew, or how the word is getting out, but I think it's really unfair or wrong if they're giving away food, and it doesn't reach our community. And I'm going to leave that there. Now let's talk about the police department and the high-speed chase. And let's talk about TV20 not even talking about the first armed robbery and reporting it, Mayor. Now, your department, and chief and left, your chief and whoever was in charge chose to conduct a high-speed chase when there's 1,000-plus people downtown on Saturday for a bank robbery. Supposedly you have some guys that's been here for a week from the first time, or more than a week, but we choose to do a high-speed chase, and we tear up. How many, have you told the community how many cars they tore up, damage, which us all taxpayers are going to have to pay for? Because next year, they're going to sit right here in a long table and ask for a bunch of new stuff. I think it's a complete failure that we jeopardize all those lives down there at the No Kings Rally that had over 1,000-plus, because our police want to go through, have a high-speed chase, which could have been toned down before it got anywhere near downtown. I think it's sad. I think it's unjust. And it's your leadership. And I don't know why he didn't come up here and stand with me today, but he did it last week. Doesn't send a good message.
James, hold on, James.
Oh, Alderman Gregory, sorry.
Yes, I agree with you. But to answer your questions, I do know that through our CBDG program, that one of the, unless it's changed, and that's why we're asking for the information, that one of the programs that, one of the Julius was putting together was to get some dumpsters out in the community, and just have some days, and, you know, you can't put electronics in there, but have some days where we can have people bring stuff in. It was something that we have done before, years ago, with a different program that got into the community and things. So I agree with you, those things are a need, because we, you know, we, I can guarantee you, we spent quite a bit of money getting fly dumping. The food bank, they're wonderful to work with. I was not there, I was at work. It was at 10:00 AM, but they do do a fantastic job of getting that word out, whether they're sending flyers to us, and we post them. It was on the news as well. They generally feed between 400 to 600 people. So I get where you're coming from. I'll do a better job of making sure I get at least that, those type of things to you, and just grow that, you know, the best we can. I hear that a lot. Well, how do people know, and stuff like that? I think as many people who care try to get it out as many ways as they can, and unfortunately, it just always misses someone. So that's something that we've got to continue to work on as a community, and making sure everybody knows, especially with these upcoming days. But I will say this, we've been, our community has been in tough times before, and it's my commitment, our commitment, that we're going to get us through it. We got through COVID, we got out there, we worked, we fed people. We're going to keep doing that. Anytime we face those things, while we build it up. So, you know, there's a lot of infomercials coming out, but anybody in this city and these wards, I know that we're going to go to bat to make sure that people are fed and stuff like that. And, you know, that's just how we get down, and you've seen it in action. So I'm going to need you with them gloves. All right, bro. Thanks, I'm glad you said that.
Thank you. I agree with Alderman Gregory, and all three of us could look at the community shred day to do, and use everybody's help to bring people out to shred papers. That's one. Two, I know we've asked Ms. Pam, who's over at Illinois Food Bank, to try to double the numbers for Thanksgiving. I know you're looking for something that's more daily, but with SNAP being taken away... I know you looking for something that's more daily, but, um, with SNAP being taken away and the amount of phone calls I got about how can you help us with getting more food in our refrigerator when our link is now being cut in half?
Yes, it's about to get scary.
So we've asked, uh, we, I'm gonna be meeting with Ms. Pam again, but asked could we find some way to try to double the numbers for Thanksgiving? And then as you know, she asks all the Greeks, the fraternities and sororities for us to come out and help, uh, with traffic and stuff, but it's gonna be a big community, uh, effort for that. So we might even have to ask for donations to try to meet those families where they are. So work with us and, uh, we'll, we'll be working on it, but it's, it's very scary times right now.
All right, let us know what else we can do too.
Thank you.
Alderman Purchase, there is a shred event planned for the pumpkin smash, so that'll come out soon.
Okay, well, yep, so now we've used that too. And I'll be helping you put that out there too on my social media. Thank you.
And we all need to work together and we will.
Appreciate you, brother. Michelle Cruzeheim.
So watching the committee meeting last week when Ms. Shaclin came up with the chief was disheartening to say the least. If the chief would like to show support for community members at the podium, then he should be in plain clothes and off duty. My tax dollars are not being spent so that he can use his influence and cloud over people. Second, when we're talking about community problems, I think it's important to outline exactly what those problems come from and where. What we're really talking about is a lack of resources that includes insufficient income, inadequate social protection, poor housing, a lack of nutritious food, clean water and access to healthcare, limited employment, families often face poor access to decent jobs and lack of job stability and transportation problems. Our bus system doesn't even work on Sunday or run on Sunday and that's huge. Systemic inequality, racism, gender inequality and environmental shocks play a significant role. Education, under-resourced schools and lack of sufficient funding to provide quality education for all. Why are we investing so many millions of dollars into the police? Do any of those things that I just listed involve more police, more investing in the police or have anything to do with police? None of it does. I don't understand, it has not stopped violent crimes, it has not done anything, it hasn't, what has it prevented really? Why aren't we listening to the recommendations made by the Massey Commission? Why aren't we doing more to have a registry for landlords? Why do tenants have to have background checks, show credit reports, do all of this, but landlords really don't have to do anything? It makes no sense. I just feel so frustrated. I also want to say thank you for passing the proclamation for Indigenous People's Day. Hopefully more people will be able to see it at the Illinois State Museum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shane Kenny. Shane Kenny.
Sean, I think it's Sean.
Uh, I'm a math teacher and wrestling coach over at Springfield High School. Uh, when I first moved here, uh, in 2018, I was kinda sad by the lack of, uh, youth wrestling in this town. Where I'm from, it's everywhere, there's hundreds and thousands of kids and we all embrace it and we understand the importance of the sport gives to our, to our community. And, uh, so me and others in the community have sort of pushed District 26 to start up its first ever IESA middle school wrestling team and they, they did it. This year, starting December 1st, we are gonna have our very first ever middle school wrestling team. This is for every single girl and boy that goes to Lincoln, Grant, Franklin, Jefferson, Washington, Link, um, Ball Charter and Isles. All seven of them, I believe, are gonna be just one big old, uh, wrestling team. And so I am excited, I'm extremely excited about it. I want like every single person in Springfield to know about it. Um, the coaching, the head coaching and assistant coaching position is currently open for applicants, um, on the district website, um, under human resources. That, that closes on Friday, so if there's anybody out there that I don't know about, that I haven't told about, that knows wrestling is interesting coaching it, uh, apply. I want it to be a highly competitive position. Um, currently the game plan is that they will probably practice in, uh, Lanfear's brand-new wrestling room and then maybe come to Springfield High after we're done with construction. Um, and so, you know, I just, I'm just extremely excited about it, I want everybody to know about it. Um, it's just, I think it's a wonderful opportunity. I think this, this community, I think this, all of those kids, you know, all two thousand, seven hundred, eight hundred that go to all those schools combined, uh, I think they can need it and I'm excited, I want, I want there to be a hundred, two hundred kids on this team, you know, because they're all coming together and, uh, you know, we, we don't do cuts. I don't know a single wrestling coach, public school at least, in Illinois that's ever cut a single kid based on skill. They, they, if they show up, they're a good teammate, they, they're eligible, we, we teach them the sport that we love and, you know, embrace, uh, teach them everything that it, you know, grows them into the best version of themselves, you know? And, uh, so I just want everyone to know about it and, uh, you know, reach out to me. Um, obviously this is a brand-new team, brand-new account, um, starting from nothing, so if there's anybody knows any, uh, fundraising opportunities, I'm sure that they would, uh, we would appreciate it. Um, you know, I'm, I'm the high school coach, I'm just trying to advocate for this middle school team and help, and whoever we decide that coaches it, I'll, I'll help them anyway because, you know, I didn't have anybody kind of take me out of their wing and I had to learn, uh, all the head coaching things that no one teacher tells you about, um, after the fact, so. All right, thanks, guys.
If you'll say, sir, Alderman Gregory?
I just wanna, I just wanna commend you and give you a round of applause for even coming up here and letting everyone know about this. I commend the school district.
Am I allowed to say my email? Can I say my email?
Yes, yes, we do.
Uh, S, S Kenny, S K E N N Y at S P S one eight six dot org. If anyone wants to reach out to me.
No, and, and, and I just wanna, you know, you, the district, everything, because that's what our, our young people need, more avenues. Everybody don't play basketball, everybody don't play football or baseball, the three major sports.
It's, it's not just the men's sport either, it's a girl, women's wrestling is the fastest-growing sport in the country and has been for almost a decade now.
I, yeah. Trust me, I'm a former wrestler and I have wrestled a tough girl, she actually beat me. I can say that, absolutely. And I was a hell of a wrestler, but she was very, very good. She wrestled pro and Olympics and everything else, she was very good. So, um, thank you for doing that, thank you for bringing this, man. I, I, I think that's so important with everything we're talking about with our young people and I think it's another avenue. Um, I didn't start wrestling until ninth grade, but definitely what it is.
You know, we didn't have the opportunity before, a lot of them can't afford the club wrestling, it gets very expensive, club wrestling, you know? So this would be a very more affordable option for all of these, these kids.
Absolutely. Thank you, appreciate you.
Roy Walton.
What, he can't come tonight?
Uh, Robert Williams.
He ain't here.
Robert Williams. Brianna Day.
Y'all, so many people have mentioned Bally, Bally Bonds. So, you know, I just gotta throw in there what I used to do back in my heyday. Um, and that is dress up like a bunny to not have to pay rent. Uh, and that is, that is still happening in this city today. Um, and it is happening further than that, we'll, we'll say that. There are women who are being solicited and being told that if they do not act upon that, that they will not have housing. Um, and it's, it's very prominent in Springfield. With that being said, uh, Ken had mentioned commercial Realtors being included in the landlord registry. I want to stress that that is absolutely a necessity, it needs to happen. Um, you know, LLCs, they don't always lead to a person. They'll lead to another LLC, which can lead to another LLC, which leads to another LLC, which might lead to a registered agent instead of a person or a company instead of a person. So it is extremely important that we get these commercial Realtors as well. Uh, before I say anything, I just want to remind everybody that I'm homeless and I have nothing to lose. So with that being said, um, way back in our heyday, I am not old enough, I do not remember our downtown being a flourishing downtown. Um, the downtown that I grew up with was, uh, you go down there to visit the Hoagland, um, so that way you can, uh, dance for forty hours a week and go to school for another forty hours a week and smile about it. Um, but that was the extent of my downtown experience growing up. Um, when my parents grew up though, however, I hear that it was flourishing and the pictures I see are flourishing and it's not like that anymore. When everything was flourishing, there was not a mall on the west side of town. Everybody who was downtown stated, if you put this mall out on the west side of town, our downtown is going to be, get ran into the ground. We are not going to be able to survive if you put a mall out there. And what I will say is that Edward DeBartolo Jr. did not care about what our community had to say and we have a mall out there anyway. We have a downtown that's going downhill. The, the mall, the Last Anchor Store at the mall has closed. Um, and I do want to state that Trump, President Trump may have pardoned Edin DeBartolo Jr., but we as a community should not forgive what he has done to our downtown and we should not forgive what he has done to our community. The Last Anchor Store that is in the mall has closed, but don't worry because the Illinois EPA is going out there, so your tax dollars are gonna keep them floating. Okay, thanks.
Tiara Standage.
Um, you know, I gotta deviate a little bit and do my own thing, but, um, I'd like to first hold space in a moment of silence for Sanya Massey and her family as they endure the trial of former Sangamon County Sheriff Sean Grayson, who callously murdered Sanya in the kitchen of her own home last year. Sean Grayson's trial began yesterday in Peoria County. The first two days were designated for jury selection. However, by 4:00 PM yesterday, twelve jurors and three alternatives were seated and sworn in. Nine white women, two white men and one black man. The alternatives consist of two more white men and another white woman. Yes, you heard it correctly, not one damn black woman. Eleven white people are being asked to decide whether a white officer is guilty of murdering a black woman in her home. This is not representation. Our community is diverse, our pain is diverse, our voices are diverse. But when an almost all-white jury is chosen to weigh the life, uh, the life and death of a black woman, it sends a painful message that even in death, our voices are still being silenced. This is exactly why people lose faith in the justice system because too often, it fails to look like and represent the people it's meant to protect and serve. Representation matters. This should have never happened. No family should have to walk into a courtroom and see a jury that looks nothing like the community where the crime happened. No one should have to beg for a fair cross-section of peers. Representation isn't a request, it's a requirement for justice. Until our courts, juries and systems reflect the people they serve, black and brown communities will continue to carry the heaviest burdens of injustice. This is also why voting matters. And not just every four years, but every day, we have the chance to use our voice. Because when we don't register to vote, we just don't lose our voice in the ballot box, we lose our seat in the courtroom. If you're not registered to vote, you can't be called for jury duty. And when we lose those jury seats, we aren't in the rooms where justice is being decided. That's how we end up with what we're seeing right now. A nationally-recognized, high-profile case where not one person on the jury looks like the victim. So I'm calling on every black person, every young person and every neighbor who says they care to register to vote today. In Illinois, it's real simple. You can register online at OVA dot elections dot IL dot gov. You can register in person, by mail or even on election day at your polling place. Voting isn't just about politicians, it's about power. It's about being counted, being called and being present when our community needs us the most. Please show up November 3rd for the Purple Coalition's Community Listening Session at 6:30 at the Old State Capitol. We want everyone in our community, from residents to organizations, to show up and use your voices. Let's come together for the betterment of our community. Also, instead of our police doing simulation riots with our union workers posing as starving community members, let's spend that money on helping feed the families that are most impacted by this government shutdown and the loss of EBT SNAP benefits. Thank you.
Bree Roberts.
I would like to start by asking for your support of the referendum for the landlord licensing and registry. Predatory landlords take advantage of low-income tenants, section eight applicants and people who may not know their tenant rights. This issue primarily impacts those who rent, which means it's disproportionately affecting people who can't afford anything better. We need stricter regulations, better access to tenant-right education and real consequences for landlords who neglect their tenants. Rent prices continue to increase, sometimes costing nearly thirty percent of someone's annual income. This is a systemic cycle that traps people in poverty. No one working twenty dollars an hour should be struggling to pay rent when our minimum wage is fifteen dollars an hour. Out-of-state landlords are especially hard to monitor. Some even form LLCs or shell companies to hide behind corporate entities and avoid accountability. These practices can be regulated, or these practices can be regulated, so tenants aren't constantly being taken advantage of, especially when renters contribute fifteen to eighteen percent of the GDP in this country. We've already seen an increase in crime here in Springfield and when people are being pushed out of their homes, left hungry and forced into unstable living conditions, things are only going to get worse. I say that from experience. I lived in a home with unsealed windows that would let wind in, but I was not able to open them. The floors were molding from underneath me, there were ants crawling out of the shower walls every single day and sewer backing into my front yard and the landlord knew of all of this from prior tenants and did not do anything and still rented me the house. Other residents have dealt with rats coming in through holes that the landlords have tried to seal with cloth, um, not getting rid of bedbugs from prior tenants and demanding people to even sign over their checks to pay for rent. Now that I've talked about that, I also want to talk about, um, Axon and AI and the AI data center that we've been discussing bringing to Springfield in the past couple of days. Um, we need to be really honest about what that means, not just for the city, um, but the community's safety and the environment as a whole. According to the International Energy Agency, AI-powered data centers are expected to double their electricity consumption by 2030, reaching roughly nine hundred and forty-five terawatt-hours per year, and that's about the same size as an entire industrialized nation. And it's not about electricity. These facilities consume millions of gallons of water every single day just to stay cool, often built in areas struggling with drought and water shortages. Once operational, the environmental strain begins immediately with more water use, more stress on the grid, more pollution and higher costs for local residents. In 2024, the University of California studied that water used for AI cooling systems can lead to localized air humidity and mold growth, particularly in neighborhoods near data centers. And this isn't just bad for the planet, but this is bad for individual humans' health. Um, I also want to talk about Axon, even though we've already agreed on this ordinance. Um, it's a software that uses artificial intelligence to automatically draft police reports. On paper, maybe that sounds effective, but it's been studied and warned that these systems are unregulated, unreliable and prone to error. An AI that mishears or misinterprets a word could create a false record that might follow a person for years. And these errors are most likely to target black and brown residents. This technology risks deepening the racial bias that already exists within the community. Several US cities have already banned or paused the use of predictive policing and facial recognition software after studies found that they led to overpolicing, wrongful arrests and expanded racial disparities. I'm asking for environmental accountability. There must- racial disparities. I'm asking for environmental accountability. There must be a full environmental impact review, one that measures water use, energy demand, emissions, and long-term health risk to residents, and community reinvestment, where real safety doesn't come from surveillance, it comes from support, mental health crisis response, affordable housing, and community-led violence prevention programs. Once the data center is built, or an AI-generated report follows somebody's life forever, it is too late to fix the issue. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, we're adjourned. Thank you, Alderwoman Purchase.